On item 6.6, I did speak to two school board members in two counties that do use this program in Hernando. I spoke to Susan DeValle and in Polk County, I spoke to Justin Sharkless. Met them at the conference that you guys thankfully sent me to. And their county does use this, but as you stated, that this would just be a tool in the toolbox. So in speaking to those school board members, asking them what are the good, the bad, the ugly, the truth, because you guys have been using this program for approximately five years, what they were able to say to me in those counties was a list of tools in their toolbox. So just to let the people in the room know who are very concerned about this, some of the other tools that these districts are utilizing are effective in their district. They do use the TPG program, but that was their district's last, absolute last resort. And they could say to their community members, these are all of the efforts that we have exhausted in our county, and it's just not enough. Now, these counties are facing shortages of like 140 teachers, where we're currently, I think, at 28 is what I counted, although we only have seven schools in the preschool, we'll call it institute. Leon County currently has 47, I think is what I looked at, if their website is correct. They only have 20 open seats in Leon County versus our 28. And our schools are not even comparable in number. So these are just some of the tools I just want our district staff to know, and the people in the room that Polk and Hernando are using. They do have certification programs currently at their high school. So our high school, one of the concerns, and I spoke to the principal there, is they're worried that we're sourcing our workforce out. They're in the nursing program, the engineering program, they're in all these amazing, the HVAC program, the carpentry, they're in all these amazing programs, but we're not trying to funnel those students back into teaching. And we have some of our own teachers' kids, we know they're going to be teachers when they grow up. So they have two different types of certification programs in Polk and Hernando County. One is called an Academy of Children's Educational Studies, and one is an Academy of Education. They have para-to-pro programs, this is another tool that they're using. I think Ms. Sandgren said that we currently have nine para-pros roughly that are wanting to go into education. These counties are helping to offset the cost of their tuition. They have two recruitment officers that are currently going to every college in the state of Florida's educational program, trying to recruit those teachers. They have updated, someone said something about our website. They have updated their websites. They're trying to appeal to a younger demographic on Snapchat, Twitter, Instagram, so through social media, they're trying every possible thing that they can. These are just the name of few. They also contract with their graduating seniors that if they come back and teach in their county, then they will also help to offset their tuition costs. Now, these are their high achieving seniors who graduate with their AA, only have to go to two years of school. But they have a toolbox full of tools that they can look at their community and say, we've exhausted every single effort, and it's just not enough. So I just wanted the board members to know some of the other possibilities that other districts are doing and are doing well. These people are just a phone call away, they want to brag on their districts, and you know, I can give you some of their numbers, or we could reach out to them also.
Ms. Sandgren, can you tell us any of those type things that we are utilizing?
Absolutely. Like, I would love to have Polk County's HR staff, but I don't. But what I do have is I have a small, but we might. So I do have, we have advertised on social media and DEDs and recruiters. We've been to virtual job fairs, we're going to face-to-face job fairs, I have another one in two weeks. We have recruited our sub-list, anyone that has a degree on our sub-list, we call them in with our principals and our HR team and ask them if they would be willing to get a statement of eligibility. We are creating programs to help our current teachers. One's called a PDCP program, right now it's in the works, it's with DOE. Where also I have presented to FSU and to Flagler's Board to waive the intern, traditional intern way, so that Holly Harden and I have worked together so that we can place these para-pros who are in education without losing their job, place them immediately into a classroom. We've worked with that. I've attended numerous Pace Consortium HR meetings, because unfortunately, everyone's in the same boat. Especially in HR, in Pace Consortium, being a small district, we only have so much, and so we're always trying to share ideas. And that's where the TPG actually idea came from, is Okaloosa County is very similar to us, and I met with their HR director in one of our meetings, and they said, hey, we've been using this program for five years, and it's really helped. It's one tool in our toolbox. They took some of our tools from our toolbox, because it speaks when we are small district versus small district. I mean, of course, large districts have great ideas, and I take it, I try to modify what I can from it, but our resources are limited, our staff is limited, but we are trying.
Mr. Beach, or Ms. Sandgren, or Mr. Pierce, when we see like the $12,000 that it would cost for one of these TPG teachers, explain how that works, and that would kind of go to Ms. Reese's question as well. Is it like this $12,000 that just kind of, we pull out of something?
So if a foreign teacher does not participate in FRS, they're one of the exempt employees in FRS rules, so that right there will say the district, 12% salary. You're looking at it at 45, restarting salary. I did provide that information over there today, I may see for myself here. That and like their loan saves $5,300 for school expenses. So also, and the company explained for the first 18 months, we don't pay our share of FICA, which is Social Security, here is 7.65%, so that's another $3,400. Finally, this company does a lot for these foreign teachers as far as handling their time in the United States of America, and that includes helping them get housing, where they have to, they have to know how to drive, so get in the vehicles, but through some means, and because they are foreigners, they are not citizens of the United States, they somehow provide their health insurance. So when we budget for a position, and we have 28 open positions right now, I don't budget 45,300 for that position. I budget 60,000, because that's how much it costs if you have someone who's going to be on retirement. If we hire someone here today from Crawfordsdale, from California, we have to do FRS, we have to do FICA, and if they're single, they may take our insurance. Our single insurance is not that bad, and that contribution is $5,500. So you take those three numbers, that amount of cost, and that 45,300 employee is $14,391, and that's more than $12,500. So this program is a non-cost, we're not taking any money from anywhere, and we don't have to. We're actually saving money. That's not the reason for this program. This program has, as Ms. Sandgren emphasized, is another, and this law board, is another tool in the toolbox. And that's all that is.
Make sure I understand correctly, and so we explain it. We have budgeted this year to fill all 28 positions, but we haven't. So the money is in the budget to fill those positions. We can't remove that money from the budget, because we won't have it to be able to fill those positions if we should choose to hire teachers. So next year, if we go into the budget with a shortage, we're going to budget for a full staff of teachers, so we have money available, so that we can hire them when they do come.
And like Chris Lawhorn said, this is a last resort.
Yeah, it is, but I don't know if you mentioned or talked about this whenever you talked about this. How many teachers are they hiring out of that program? I mean, they're...
They did, they talked about that.
140 short?
It's a drop in the bucket for them. So in Polk County, it started out small. He said it was a very bumpy ride, very bumpy. The guy, so in Polk County, they're elected by district, not all of their county. So he is in his district, and he represents a rural district, which would be similar to ours. So they are fully dependent, because of the vehicle situation is a concern. They allot $1,500 to $3,000, which comes off their salary. We would give them like a small loan to pay for some last month's rent, things like that. Also, that's going to be an issue, I think, in McCullough County. Someone posted on Facebook, what the median rent now is like $1,500. It's probably going to get you a single wide somewhere down the long dirt road. But, sorry. Driving, sorry. So yeah, so in Polk County, in that rural district, got that middle school where they're using these, they're depending on their teaching staff to drive those women to work. And that's the only thing that works out for them. So they started out small, they asked for like 10, they got maybe six. They asked for 10, they maybe got four. Now, in Hernando County, they just now put through a total budget expenditure of $200,000 that just went through like two Mondays ago. They're not going to pay any more than $200,000 out to TPG, because they're trying to get 20 to 40 additional teachers in that district.
So we didn't get no chance to talk about that the other night at the budget workshop that we had. I mean, how many teachers do you expect? If we use this program?
If I said I got one or two, I'm calling that lucky.
So I mean, this is a...
I mean, because it's an exchange program, and the company says it all the time. We are not here for teacher shortage, we are not here to recruit teachers. It is an exchange program. And this contract comes up now, he said by the time they go through everything they have to do on their end, and with the United States and everything like that, it, we may see a teacher early in the fall, but one year from now.
Right.
And this is also an MOU for if our teachers wanted to be an exchange teacher in the summer or whatever, they already, we already have a contract, so they could go vice versa both ways.
So most likely, we're 28 teachers short, this might provide four, five, best case scenario?
That is extremely best case. He said it's becoming really popular with Florida, and so he said, if you'd asked me two, three years ago, I'd have told you, yeah, sure, I can give you all 28 teachers. He said, but now I can't, it's very limited how many teachers the United States is allowing to come over. He said this is a national, like, TPG is a national company, not just a Florida company. And so he said he doesn't know, he couldn't guarantee any, and you don't have to hire them.
But this would just be one of the tools in the toolbox to potentially mend up somewhere.
See, exactly.
And the money is in our budget already for hiring these teachers, because we have to, we have to budget.
Can I just say one last thing, and I'm not going to say anything else? So one other thing, like with some of the people who spoke tonight, and fielded a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails on this today. Whenever they're saying, take care of who we have here, if we were taking care of who we have here, and this was not said in our budget workshop, this hit me like at midnight whenever I emailed Mr. Beach, bless his heart, wonderful, thank you so much. We're currently ranked, out of there's 67 districts, we're currently ranked number 53 in teacher pay. There are only 14 districts who start their teachers off less than us. That, we really need to start thinking about that. If we're number 53 in...
Do you know what size we are, population wise, based out of that 67?
No.
That would be interesting to just, similarly sized, we would say that 53rd, county 53rd largest county in the state.
Mr. Beach can email you the survey, he emailed it to me.
Be interesting to know.
So whenever they're saying that, you know, that's where they're coming from, is that 53rd ranking.
Just to clarify another point that was made, if I may, this is not a recruitment tool. Anybody that has read the contract should know that we can't even, if they separate from our school district, we can't even talk to them for a year. And even if we did talk to them after that year, we couldn't hire them for two years after that. Okay, so from a recruitment perspective, I fielded a few calls today that are concerned that, you know, we were recruiting these, overseeing them, and then going to wind up offering them a job and beyond their three to five year commitment to the county, we're going to bring them in and make them a full-time teacher and take a spot of a McCullough teacher or an individual program in the US. Just know, the way that the contract's written, that's not possible. I know that's kind of low ranking issue for a lot of folks that are here, and for a lot of the folks that I have spoken to, I understand that. But for those who have asked the question, I've had to explain that as well. This is not, and cannot be used as a recruiting tool because of the way the contract is written.
And Ms. Reese, one of the comments that you had was about how some of our veteran teachers' pay is very close to our starting teachers' salary. We are very well aware of that, and trying to make as many strides as we can to get there. We are mandated, anything we give a starting teacher, we, you know, or anything we give a veteran teacher, I'm sorry, we have to give one and a half times that to the starting teacher. So it's very difficult for us to give that to our veteran teachers now, until we get to that 47,500, which is the number we're driving hard to get to, because once we get to that point, we're not, you know, we're not handcuffed by that regulation. That's something we'd love to change, but that's something that's been given to us from up above.
Just to reiterate that, that is the number one topic. Anytime we start talking about teacher pay, that is the very first thing that everybody up here in the district staff bring up is, we need to make sure that there's some equity there, ensure that our veteran teachers are compensated appropriately. Number one, that's the first thing we think of when we start talking about teacher pay.
The second thing that we talk about is insurance, because we hate it. And when I came onto the board, that was one of the first things, I was like, how? What can we do? How do we change this? How? And we actually asked Mr. Beach to provide us with a list of insurance, and what the board gives toward insurance versus other districts that are relatively the same size as us. And in doing so, we found that we give almost, well, a larger contribution than almost any other district toward insurance, and...
Polk County is the only county that offers more.
Ask for that, somebody ask for that.
It's not something that we don't still strive to do something about, but we have felt so tied and don't know, I mean, we're constantly looking for other measures to take. One of the problems that we have is that only about 80 employees in the district take family insurance, and that's the one that's the most expensive. Because of that, we can't seem to get any kind of leverage from CHP. And we've also asked for other companies to provide us with estimates on insurance. And far and away, CHP had the better deal for our district. Because we have so few employees in general, because we have so few opportunities for different insurance companies at a semi-affordable rate, we've kind of been stuck.
And we're rated by the health of our county. We're not rated on, you know, whether or not Melissa and I are sick or well, but the health of the county in general. So Franklin County has a different rate, Leon County has a different rate. That is based on the health rate of our county as a total population, which we also can't control and have no control over. But I'm interested for the meeting on the 30th, I mean, we've long said, that's probably the only thing that's ever going to change. I don't think you're ever going to get an insurance company to charge us less. I don't think that's going to happen. They would just as soon not insure us as they would insure us for less. But if there was ever a time for the state to step in, and, you know, they do, we are part of the retirement system, because they like it when we're giving them our money, and they like to manage it for us, but they do not like it whenever they would have to pay money to subsidize our insurance. But the state subsidizing our insurance is probably the most likely scenario that will ever change the health insurance situation, in my opinion. But this is a tool in our toolbox, if it could add four teachers, and we can monitor the progress and see how that goes. And at the same time, it sounds like you're very willing to spearhead that, Lori, but adding some other tools to our toolbox?
I'm willing to spearhead what? Please clarify.
Adding more tools to our toolbox, enriching our toolbox with other tools.
Other tools.
Yeah, I mean, if we, this may be another idea that Lori has in, you know, in too much. But we need more tools in the toolbox, because 28 teachers short.
Do their job for them.
I mean, if you're telling me it's going to add four, there were 24 teachers short. And we're in the same boat that I'm in right now next year.
Why doesn't she just become superintendent?
And I'll say this, just one more thing, and I'll be quiet, but rather, regardless of how this is voted tonight up here, I want to thank the district staff for their creativity. They're thinking outside of the box, they're trying to figure something out. Everybody that stood up tonight recognized that there was an issue. Everybody that I have talked to, and there's been many over this long weekend, have recognized that there is an issue, that there is a teacher shortage. And some of those things can be addressed, and some of them are a lot harder to address. I'll say this, regardless of how this winds up tonight, this specific agenda item, I appreciate the district staff, how much time and effort they put into this, whether it's a good fit for this county or not, I've heard from a lot of my constituents, I've heard from a lot of teachers, and I've heard from you all tonight, and I agree with you. It might not be a great fit. But at the same time, I want to recognize the district staff for the amount of effort that they have put into this, because folks, whether you like it or not, and let me tell you something, I receive email and calls, and I'm sure everybody else up here does, and people say there's no tone in email. I can assure you, in some of those emails I receive, there's plenty of tone. Okay? And so if you want to be upset about it, that is your God-given right, please be upset about it. But please don't be upset with the district staff trying to think outside of the box, trying not to do what has always been done, just for the sake of, that's how we've always done it. No, that's not what they're doing. It's new times, new challenges, and they're trying to rise to that challenge. And I'll say this, I appreciate it, I do, thank you. I thank all the district staff for what they're doing. Rather or not this specific agenda item passes tonight with a majority, I want to recognize our district staff and tell them that we appreciate the amount of effort that they're putting in trying to find a solution. Okay? So as you see them out in the community, as you're communicating with them in email and texts, please understand that they are working for you all, for your kids, for your family members that are working in this district, and at the very minimum, appreciate the amount of work they're putting in this kind of stuff, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Beach, one of the things that I wanted to ask was, like, Ms. Longhan was explaining where we are in teacher pay out of the 67 districts in the state? Where are we in the funding that we receive from the state?
Well, last week I showed you that, so I have a preview. I was never aware of that. Years pass by, I always look at my history books and see what the legislature gives us. People just really need to know, this board does not control the revenue, the right to structure. The governor does. But we have a trend of being the 65th funded county in the state. And there's been some recent upticks to like 52 or 3, but we're back down to 62 this year. And that's just who we are. It's the formula for education in the state of Florida is an organic entity that has all different types of factors to it. There's stuff for small districts, but there's also a coastal living basket, which we don't thrive in that. The economists say it's not as expensive to live in McCullough County as it is down in South Florida, which probably is true. And so we're 62nd.
And to be clear, that means that only five other districts in the state receive less student funding.
And that's taking into account ESE students, the analysis I did is, which were weighted, which takes into account our students, because we do have ESE students. So as I confessed to the board last week, I never even thought about that we were down in the bottom. I just always, you know, focused on what we had last year, what the legislature gives us. And once again, as a governmental entity, we are unlike the county government and the city of Tallahassee. We don't set our taxes, we don't set our revenue. This board does not have control, it's the legislature. And if anyone has a complaint, you need to complain about your legislature. If it keeps cutting taxes, they go to public fund, to public education. It's been a long trend, and now here we are at this crossroads, where people don't want to come into the profession. And now the legislature would have to change their trend of reducing the taxes that help fund public education. And I don't see that happening. And so, once again, we are one of the lowest counties funded, we're one of the highest performing counties in the state. That's why there's always been these metrics that the legislature tries to attempt to put out there to see if school boards are doing the right thing with their money. And we always end up being the highest in these things called return on investment, less because we don't get much money, and we produce. And so that's our story. We're 65th, we've been 65th, and now we're like 62nd this year. I mean, we're 67th county, and our beginning pay is 53. We still don't like that, but speaking of that, that's relatively pretty successful. And you know, a lot of the counties that are below us are in the panhandle. So this 47.5 mandate that the governor did, which does have its merits, although it left behind the veteran teachers. And this board and the union, the last two years have done things that were very exceptional to give money to the veteran teachers around the laws that the legislature has established. And so we've been successful there, but that's just the state of our situation.
Blah, 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 let's go.
But more Florida is challenging. We've got counties, we've got two counties next to us, we're at 45.3, and they're barely over 40,000. And they got a long ways to go to get to 47.5. A lot of the counties down south, Walton County, they're already there. But a lot of the North World counties, which is what we are. Here we are, this is our geographical situation, that's the counties that are below. And there's some rural counties, like Josh says, compared to other counties like, there's a lot of rural counties probably that surround Gainesville, and maybe down in what they call the Heartland area, which is down above the Everglades, your Hardee's, your, these, I'm not going to call them Chogie, but these small counties like that, Soto, they're probably in our focus as well. And so it's a great program that the governor did, they just are not putting the money into it. That they allocated a per amount of money, and the big districts are already there. We need more money to get to there, so that we can get past this 150% restriction. But we also just need more money. And that's either the legislature, or as some districts have done, they've gone out to their constituents and asked for voting, and that's sad, that the legislature puts counties in that situation to try to fund public education, and they don't have the backbone to fund it.
Summarized, we were given the mandate of 47.5, but we weren't given the funding to get it.
The first year they did, second year they kind of forgot about it, third year...
Well, they gave money to work toward it, not to fund the full amount.
No, they, once again, they, first year they gave 500 million, the next year they gave 50 million, which is paucally compared to 500 million. And then this year, we were able to have 2,000, they gave 250 million. So, you know, it takes money to do it. And once again, not trying to get into the lecture here, but school board funding in South Florida is not controlled by the local school board, it's controlled by the legislature. They have tried to level on the chief for years for public education. And here we are, here we are under shortage. As we all know, 22 million jobs were lost during the pandemic. There was 22 million jobs that didn't recover, except public education, we're still down to 300,000 jobs across the country, 300,000 jobs. And most of that is from teachers. Air Force was part of this, finance strike was called away. Because I got, you know, I told you guys, I've got people who in my experience in other counties, they can't fill the positions. It's just, once again, it's a dilemma that every district in the state faces. And, you know, no one's happy here.
So Ms. Sandgren, if this were approved by the board tonight, what does that limit us to or require us to do by saying that the board did? what does that limit us to or require us to do by saying that the board did accept it? Are we, and I hope I'm being clear. The moment that, if that were taken and we signed on the dotted line, do we have to utilize it ever at all?
Yeah, it is a, what the contract is, is basically the T P G that you are willing to have an interview of understanding, or enough understanding that you're open to be the teacher exchange program. That you're open to be that county board's teacher exchange program. So that means that they will ask me, hey, or they will speak with me about a teacher that they have vetted that may possibly be willing to come to our college. And we can interview or hire or not hire. And when we hire them, they would be on a teacher contract, just like any other teacher walking off the street, one year.
A one-year contract, it's not a three-year contract.
The visa they have is for three years. We do not have, they're strictly a teacher, like any, they can join the union, they can do whatever they want.
Are we, okay, so let's say within the first three months of teaching four of us, that they were not meeting the requirements, just like if a new teacher starts in our county right now. And you can pretty much fire at will based on performance and how it's going. Would this be any different for those?
Exactly the same. So the only thing that would be different was Randy and his office would work with T P G and the portion of the money that we had to take out of their salary, that would, they would have to adjust that. But as far as disciplining, the evaluations, everything, should they just like if we hired them straight out of Florida State?
Mr. Beach, also, and I just want to make sure that I'm really clear on all of this. So I'm sorry if I'm repeating things and all that, I just want to know. So let's just take a kind of round number and say that we pay teachers right now forty thousand, which is not accurate, but I'm not a math person, so I'm going to talk off the top. So if we took that fourteen thousand dollars and change out of, or that they, hang on, let me think, I want to say this.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I have your permission to show you something?
You can.
They have raised our board, they have raised our board.
Wasn't me.
They have raised our board. Okay, so basically, I had a nice board for me. Currently, our first-year teacher salary is forty-five-three.
Okay.
So if you take the U.S. citizen that works for us, they're going to get forty-five-three plus fourteen thousand infinites. So forty-five-three plus fourteen thousand.
Okay.
Foreign teacher comes in, they're going to get forty-five-three, just like everybody else. The fourteen thousand is not given to them, they don't get that from us. That money is what the company takes and manages for them. They pay the five thousand. They use that to pay for their retirement, if they have a retirement program. So that money goes to that group, so there's no difference. But like Randy said, there are some benefits because they have reductions in what's required for retirement. And what that translates into is they actually will make one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars less than a first-year teacher that's a U.S. citizen. So in fact, they're going to get paid less working here. Now remember, these folks are coming from different places, the Philippines, Europe, different places where the American dollar translates to a really high level there when you cash in your money in American dollars. And they come here, even if they were making thirty-two thousand, to them, back in a lot of their countries, that figure is significant. They take that money back home with them, they've got a lot more money. And so that's what's lucrative for them. You have to remember that these are people that are looking for an experience, one. They're also looking for an opportunity to come here to our higher-ed institutions, which we've got two in Tallahassee. So a location here will be something that they'll significantly look at. Because they can live in Tallahassee, and they can get a master's degree or doctorate while they're here during that window. And ultimately, a lot of them are looking for U.S. citizenship eventually, too. So this is a way for them to gain access to the country and try and navigate those borders. So that's what we're looking at. All of them speak English. And I was really encouraged when I talked to my friend in Okeechobee County, and they started about eight years ago doing this in Okeechobee. And those of you that don't know, it's a fairly remote place in our state. And they had the same problem that we've had for a number of years. Even before we had the teacher shortage in Waukesha County, we've always had trouble with math and science. They've been issues in the past. And so one of the things that he told me was that they really had a lot of availability of math and science in struggle. And that they filled, like, some of their very difficult positions to fill, like chemistry and trigonometry and things like that, with these foreign teachers. And in talking with Ken, he was really happy with the program overall. He never had to terminate one. And they had been very, very careful to vet them the same way they would any entity that comes in. And the beauty of it is, is that T P G is an exchange company that works both directions. But what their job is, is to make sure that they've done the background work and the background checks, and all of the security that's required for those people to enter the country, or for Americans to go overseas and teach in another country. So that's important. But I think the biggest thing everyone has to realize is that one sin that's committed in education is when you discover something that's best for students. You discover that a new program is best for students. But because you can't get it off the ground, you have to push it forward, push it out a couple of years. So what that means is that that's, if it's two years that you can't get the new well-being program started, that's two graduating classes that didn't get that opportunity. Does that make sense? So the same thing here, the epitome of madness is to do the same thing over and over again expecting a different result. So if we go into next year and don't do something a little bit different, we're going to get the same result we have this year. We're going to have a lot of openings that go throughout the year. We're going to have some critical openings at the secondary level in math and science that will continue to be a problem. And our kids suffer from that. So I think when Lori came to me with this idea, and I did some more research, talked to some of my peers at the superintendent level, I saw this too as a part of us trying to make some changes in the way that we do things so that we can bring our kids quality instruction. And, you know, we've got good principles at the school level, hiring authorities, that are going to monitor these teachers just like we do everybody else. And at the same time, make sure that they're doing their job and provide the supports that they're going to need to transition into our community. So I think that, again, if you choose not to support this, that's fine. But once again, don't expect a different result than what we've had this year to some degree. Because a lot of the things that are being talked about, that Miss Longhorn talked about, and that Lori was talking about, are not ready to help us in the immediacy. This could be immediate. Does that make sense? So these ideas of how we're going to do new toxic certifications, so that there's this, an intern we can pay, hire, pay them during their internship, and then let them stay in their position so we can get them before the private sector can take them. That's in the works, but I don't know that it's going to happen this coming fall. And I definitely couldn't tell you when it will happen, because it's very, very slow when you're working with post-secondary education and getting them to come on board. It's also slow sometimes with D O E. But we've got ideas on other ways of doing alternative certification. But honestly and truthfully, we have a significant number of people that we're working with right now in our community, in our schools, are alternative certification people. They are not professionally trained teachers. They come to us not professionally trained teachers, and we have to train them. So, you know, we have to get them through that process. There's nothing wrong with that, that's where we're at, and that's where it is across the state. It's pretty relative based on each county. I mean, last time I checked, over in Bay County, there were about a hundred and forty teachers shot. That was in December, because they're down a hundred and forty in Bay. And who wouldn't want to live in Panama City? But the reality of it is, is that this is not an issue just for Waukesha County. It's a national issue, and it's a state issue. But again, doing the same thing over again and expecting a different result is just madness. So we've got to start doing things that we can immediately access. And these ideas that, like Ms. Longhorn spoke about and Lori did, they're great ideas and they're in the works, but they're not ready yet. They're not ready yet. And so even if we did create an academy for our students to try and encourage them to become future educators, we should have future educators.
We do now.
So even if we did that, you're still talking about kids that if they got their A A degree while they're in high school, they're still two years out. So, you know, we've got to do some things right now to try and bridge that, this is one of them. But we're not going to fill all twenty-eight positions with these children, that's not going to happen. But we might get two really well-meeted math teachers to Waukesha High School. And I know there's people who'd be happy to have that. So that's my two cents on this, and I'll stop.
Are all of the T P G instructors, will, before they come to us, will they have earned their Florida teaching certificate? So it will be based on Florida standards?
That's part of the T P G vetting system, is that they will not come to our door and say they are ready to be an exchange teacher if they have not secured all their housing, their driving, their certifications, everything with the state of Florida. Like, that's one of their requirements.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I was just, as questions come, I'm just going to go for it. So would hiring a foreign exchange teacher this way through T P G in any way impact the money that we can give to teachers? That in and of itself, hiring one of those teachers? Take any money away from money that we'll be able to negotiate for our teachers next school year in any way, shape, or form?
If you think of everybody as just being a human, we've got twenty-eight human vacancies. We'll budget for twenty-eight human vacancies next year, and a human will fill that spot. And they'll get whatever we've got set as a first-year teacher salary. And so in that regard, no, ma'am, there's no difference. It's not going to be taking money from anyone.
The only way that would work is if we said, we don't need to raise teachers.
I think the bigger thing I'm concerned with is if things don't get better, and I don't see it happening in a hurry, class size reduction is going to be a problem. And so we're not going to be able to beat it. And once that happens, we're going to have classrooms with larger classes. And then we'll have more teachers that may quit. Because right now, you can put your name out on M D with your resume, and you'll get offers to work from home. And, you know, right now, to be quite frank with you, in a lot of the exit interviews across the state, although money's always a big deal, even more disconcerting is that teachers are giving reasons like, we're tired of abusive students, and we're tired of lack of parent support. And that's where a lot of people are opening the door to start their way out, because they're tired of that.
So there's a cost effect. If this doesn't pass, there's a very high potential that class size will go up because we won't have the option.
Unless we have the most, you know, I tell you when I get scared. I get scared when one of the most successful teacher training programs in North Florida is talking about closing. And I'm talking about Flagler. Flagler has built theirself, their presence here was built on K-six certification programs for teachers. And all the other stuff they do is great, but that's not what kept the doors open. It was the K-six cohort classes. And they're talking about not being able to maintain it because there's not interest in going into it. And, you know, there you go. You know, I commend people to go into the profession now, but I'm so glad both of my kids did not become teachers. I really am, given the state of affairs right now.
I would like to add this, this is just kind of my take on what was said. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result. And if we don't change something, which this doesn't necessarily have to be what we change, competitive salary, competitive benefits is all our teachers are asking for. If that changes, that's going to change our teacher shortage. I understand that we may be limited as we move into that, but I don't think that it's the money. I think that it's what this program represents to our current educators, to our current personnel. It's undermining who they are, what they're asking for, showing that they're replaceable without sourcing our teachers. And I think that that's their perception. So I just want us to kind of be reminded of that before we go into a vote.
And that does make sense. I will say this, though, salaries have gone up every year for the last five years, and every year that they've gone up, more teachers have left the profession.
Because the insurance continues to go up, and there is no true increase in what they bring home. That's just the example. I take the example, so I take the vote ten times as hard as you may. Right.
Because I did.
I lose thirteen hundred dollars still, taking a twenty thousand dollar pay cut to do this job every month.
Bring it, girl.
One of the things that we do have to weigh and measure really with that, though, as a board, in my mind, is, are we going to give more money to a portion of our employees, faculty, and staff by contributing even more to insurance? But then the other teachers and faculty and staff don't get the same benefit because they don't want to take it anyway.
Right, and that was a very valid conversation we had with the eight percent that only take the family plan. But then there's also the other side of, if we offered it a family plan at six hundred dollars, we may see that number increase from eight percent to sixty-eight percent. Because all of a sudden, people can afford to get insurance for their families. And like Mr. Beach said, he's not sure where these families are going. Are they just not carrying insurance? Are they going to the marketplace? Are they getting, you know, their own individualized healthcare? I think that eventually, this is just a conversation that us as board members are going to have to face. And give it a try, try it for a year, if it works, great, if it doesn't, we'll try something new. That's, I think that that's what we're geared, that's what I feel that I'm geared for. We've got to try something new, I agree.
And I do too. And we have tried new things every single year, and we're definitely not constrained to going, okay, well, this didn't work, so that's all we're going to do. We're, I feel, I know I am extremely open to new opportunities and new things that we can do to provide the very best education for our students, the best opportunities for our employees, whether they're staff or teachers. Having been here since 2012, it's really hard, it's really discouraging. And it's not something that I enjoy a lot of days because I don't know what all the answers are. I just want somebody to give me the real answer.
The beauty of this is, is that the way that we work with all of our negotiations is that at some point, the teacher union will either agree or not agree with the board's plan for settling. And then the teachers will go vote on that. So let's just pretend that next year, we have this amount of money available for teacher salaries and insurance. And the union chooses to make that a year that they want to devote a hundred percent of that to insurance on them. Okay? And so then you agree to that, and you take that to a vote with all of the teachers and employees that work within the district, or the teachers for that contract, and they vote. And if that's what they want, then we'll see if in fact the teachers take advantage of that option year and take advantage of the family plan. Because the single plan doesn't seem to be a bigger issue. It's pretty much those eighty people that are on family. So maybe we increase, I think we've got, how many teachers, Randy, three hundred, two hundred and eighty?
Probably, our unit's probably around three hundred.
So maybe that next year, that might be the tactic that we take to the union. And if two hundred and eighty people take the family plan, then they're going to be happy with that contract. That'll be a great contract, because everyone's going to get that benefit. And that's been the issue all along. And that's why the only way that we've really seen a real pathway to equity was to provide a sum of money to the union. If they agree to that, the union then takes that to the teachers, and the teachers agree to that. And so by giving salary, they can choose whether they want to apply it towards insurance or not. And I think the other thing to remember that's really important, and if there's someone in here, I think Ms. Reese, you said you work for the state? How many raises did you get after two thousand and five? Okay, but what did they do with your insurance? They covered that increase, do you know why they did that? Do you know why they did it? It's cheaper, it's cheaper for the state. It's cheaper to give you insurance rather than it is to give you a salary increase. And you know when you're going to regret? When people regret not getting those salary increases that are incremental? It's when you're seventy and you're retired, and you're looking back at what you're...